The April 21st, 2015 Meeting of the Board of Education is called to order. This evening, we have some wonderful special guests with us who are going to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance and a Moment of Silence. And I'm going to call their name, and as I do, maybe they move up to the table here in front of the microphones. Okay? So, we're going to start with Jessica Milton. Hi, Jessica. Colton Potter. Hi, Colton. Braylon Jackson. Gavin Hendershot. I like the haircut. Owen Allen. Morgan Pearson. Faith. Do I have everyone? I know there were two that couldn't be with us. And these students are all pre-K students at Martinsville Elementary School. So, if everyone will stand, please for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Music) Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you stay there just a minute? I know some of you have your parents with you and family members, brothers and sisters. Would each of you like to...well, let's start. Jessica, would you like to maybe introduce the people who are here tonight? Okay, with mommy and daddy and everyone she just mentioned, stand up so we can...wonderful. Thank you for coming. All right, um, Colton Potter. Would you like to introduce anyone? Would Colton's relatives stand up? There you go. Thank you, relatives. Thanks, welcome. Braylon, do you have someone special to introduce?
Mommy.
Mommy and Gay. Stand, please. Gay. Okay, Gavin?
I have mom.
Okay. Stand, please. Wonderful. Um, let's see. Owen? Have with you, just see. Mom? Could mom stand up?
Happy.
And then, okay? Welcome, Morgan?
I have my mom and my brother.
Okay, would mom and brother stand up? And Faith?
Hi, mom.
Hey, mom. Here's mom. Hey. Thank you so much. And Dr. Newcomer here is the principal at Martinsville. Would you like to maybe tell us a little something about the program there?
Sure. This is our first year for a pre-K program, and we have a morning and afternoon session. These boys and girls are all from our afternoon session. And they're doing a great job this year. In fact, I think I was just talking to Jessica and asking her, one of the things that they do that I've never heard done anyplace else is they sing the alphabet backwards. Jessica was singing that for me. Would you like to sing that, Jessica? Do that real quick for her.
D Y F W U T S I Q P O N N L K J I H G F E D C B A. Now my, no my, D Y X S S S U G S T R.
Yay! Wonderful. So, I will tell you, I can't even do that, so...thank you for letting us come.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. What a great reason.
Also want to introduce Ms. Sherry Rimsberg, who is our paraprofessional with the program. The teacher, Denise Swain, could not be here tonight. Her son has a sporting event. Sherry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What a wonderful way to start our evening and our meeting. And all the family, you don't need to stay. You're welcome to stay. We'd love to have people in the audience, but if you'd like to take a moment and before we start the rest of our meeting and leave, that's all right as well. Thank you. While they're moving out, let's go ahead and approve the agenda.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the agenda as presented by the Agenda Planning Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Hardings. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Fisher, thank you. The question is on Dr. Harding's approval of the agenda. All in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Approval of the minutes.
Yes, Madam President, I move for approval of the minutes of the closed session held on Tuesday, April 7th, 2015. The work session held that same day, April 7th, 2015, and also the business meeting for that day, Tuesday, April 7th, 2015.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Hardings. Any questions, comments on the minutes? Question is on Mrs. Williams' motion. All those in favor? Thank you. Seven zero. All right, we're moving to the public comment. Part of the tonight's meeting, we have two people signed up. A Mr. James Doyle, if you would come forward, please. And each person wishing to address the Board of Education may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools, except personnel and student matters, which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. And would you introduce some of your other special guests that you've brought with you this evening?
That I'm honored to have with me.
Yes.
These are three members of our chess club that we started at the local public library. This is Maverick, and this is Andrew, and Alicia. And they're going to help me, they're going to hold up...they're going to help me with the presentation, actually hold up a board.
Could everyone sit down so you're near the mic?
Yeah, sure.
That would be really great.
Okay. Should I just put this, can I put this in the front?
You can, thank you.
And I apologize in advance, I'm not much of a public speaker, but thank you very much for this opportunity.
Yes, sir.
I sent, I sent everyone, I believe, an email today with lots of links to studies and research papers and videos. That email really has the content. It's just impossible in three minutes to talk about the benefits of chess and education. But I would like to highlight a few things. They're sitting right here. And I'd like to tell you about what other school systems around the country are doing, other public school systems are doing with chess, most in their schools, most notably in New York City with chess in the schools. They have a wonderful program. They've been teaching chess in their public schools since the 1980s. And they, they teach, I think if I, if I'm not mistaken, about 5,000 children in their public schools. And I believe most of them, if not all of them, are in Title I schools in the different boroughs in New York City. I went up to New York and went through their teacher training program. And what they're doing at their offices in Midtown Manhattan, what they're doing with chess up there and the kids that I met is just inspiring. And I really think that we can do some of those things here. And we're doing some of those things now with, with a library program that we started in February. And I'd like to talk very briefly about some of the things that we've done with that program. Recently, we started the program in February, and earlier this month, we took the kids down to the U.S. Naval Academy to play them in Shipman in chess. This was the first time the academy has ever done anything like that, and it was just wonderful. If you, in the email, I provided a link to a wonderful story that WHAG-TV did. They sent a reporter down with us. And, and that, that will tell the whole story. The kids had just such a wonderful time. And the whole purpose of that trip was not only to deepen their interest in chess, but I wanted, the purpose was to get the kids to start thinking about college while still in elementary school. And I asked the midshipmen to talk to the kids about what it took for them to get to the academy and what it's going to take for them to get to college. And the unique thing about this opportunity was that they were able, over a game of chess, to have one-on-one, to have a meaningful conversation with a midshipman at the U.S. Naval Academy. And they can tell you about the experience. They were, they were all there. And the other thing I'd like to highlight is, last weekend, I went, I've been training as a tournament director with the United States Chess Federation. Last weekend, I went to the U.S., to the Maryland Elementary School Chess Championships in Baltimore. We had 322 children there. Maryland has a very active chess association, but everything is located down in Baltimore or Washington. There's nothing available in terms of scholastic chess for our kids here in Western Maryland. So, I'm, I'm here tonight to ask you to at least think about maybe creating these opportunities that other kids in the states have for chess. And I would encourage you to read some of the studies that I included to, to understand the benefits. The library has been very supportive. They've seen the positive impact it's having on the kids, and they've asked, they've already asked me to extend the program into next year, the fall and spring, offering two 14-week semesters. I'd like to push this opportunity out to more kids, pre-K through high school. And that's why I'm here.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Would your friends like to make a few comments?
Guys, you want to say something?
Anything you'd like to share with us about your experience at the Naval Academy?
Yes, and this is Andrew. He was, well, I think he was the only person from Washington County to go to the Elementary School Chess Championships. And he, it was his first tournament, and he came back with a trophy. So...
Andrew?
Andrew, you want to talk about the academy, or...he's a little shy.
Okay.
Maverick, you want to talk about the Naval Academy? Did you have a good time?
Yeah.
You did? What was, what was fun about it?
That you got to play the midshipmen.
Yeah, absolutely.
What do you remember from the experience?
Has to probably come down just a little bit. Stand, there you go.
I, I remember when we were, when we were there playing the midshipmen, they, I saw all the other people, and they were, they looked like they were having a good time.
Excellent. Good. Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to share with us.
My pleasure. Thank you for giving this opportunity. I look forward to hearing from you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Next signed up is a Mr. Roger Torres. If you'd like to come forward. It's kind of a hard act to follow all of these children, but welcome.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Yeah, good evening, Board President, Board Members. My name is Roger Torres, and I would like to speak tonight about the RFP number 2015-30 regarding the lease of 130 multifunctional units for the school system. I represent, I am a representative of Canon Solutions America, who is the current vendor. Additionally, I have four children that attend the Washington County Public School System. Our specific concern is related to the proposed recommendation to award this bid to the Phillips Office Solutions as the lowest-cost responsive and responsible bidder. The spec requirements mandatory on page 15 on the consumable supplies clearly states that all supplies, including staples, should be included on the bidder's response. I do have a copy of the, here with me, that specifically talks about page 15 of the response. According to the information that was going to be provided to the board as supplied by Mr. Richard Wright, communicated to me yesterday, it still, it clearly states that the Phillips Office Solutions proposal does not include the cost of staples, which staff estimates will cost an average of $22,000 per year, times five, which is $113,000, for the term of the lease procured separately from the contract that was submitted as a response. Our concern is two things. Staples are very costly consumable, which were included as requirement in our bid specification. We have taken on and encountered for the exposure of unlimited usage that does now allow for us to bill separately on the actual usage basis, as it's now part of the purchasing recommendation.
Mr. Torres?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I interrupt just a minute, and I apologize? I'm a little concerned that as you get into some of these details here, that you're getting close to possibly having a concern with a vote that is going to happen later tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you may be getting ahead of the process. And I would suggest that if this is a prelude to a bid dispute, that we probably need to stop the conversation at this point. And you would need to speak with Mrs. Freeman about the correct appeal process for any type of, of outcome that you disagree with. At this point, the board has not voted on this consent agenda. We certainly appreciate you bringing information and concern to us, but we have to be very careful about any, any possible bias or information different from other bids.
Now, a question is, is it possible that, the reason that I'm here tonight is for at least that the final award of the, of the contract be withheld until further investigation is concluded here?
And that's a question that would be taken up with staff, with Mrs. Freeman. We do have a policy, DJFR, that speaks very precisely to the process with any kind of bid dispute. And I would ask that you head in that direction.
Thank you very much.
I would appreciate it. And thank you for coming this evening.
Have a good evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Is there any public response to either of these speakers by my colleagues? All right, we're moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have the great honor of recognizing two young scholar athletes. These two young men are the first freshmen in Washington County High School history to win a state championship in wrestling. In just a moment, I'm going to ask Aaron Brooks to come forward, who won the 113-pound weight class, and Brian Stewart, who won the 126-pound weight class, to come forward. Both of these men are part of a very successful wrestling team at North High School, coached by Greg Slick. Greg, if you would bring your wrestlers forward, board members, if you'd come down front, we're going to give them an award and recognize them for their accomplishments. Brian, if you'll come forward first. Congratulations, we're very proud of you. Do not take any of these guys down, okay? All right. Aaron, congratulations, we're very proud of you.
Congratulations, sir.
How's your brother?
Keep it up.
He's better? All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Coach Slick, thank you, and congratulations, well done. Another great year.
Thank you.
Whoops, I'm going to shake your hand, and then I'll let Mr. Ridenhour.
Congratulations to him.
Oh, they're really great. Thank you. Well done. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
For the audience, I'll just mention again, as Dr. Wilcox said, first freshman in the history of Washington County Public Schools to win wrestling individual state championship. And we're looking forward to having these guys around for three more years. Another round of applause, please.
Board members, thank you very much. If you'd come back up.
Any other comments?
And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you. We have you a little bit later in the agenda as well.
Yes, you do.
Yes, we do. All right. We're now looking at unfinished business. We have the second reading of proposed changes to policy GCBDA, family and medical leave. Mrs. Keller and Mr. Trotta.
Thank you. Good evening. During the first reading of this policy, there were recommended changes to, to the policy offered by a member of the Board of Education. During the policy committee's public work session conducted on April the 8th, the committee endorsed the recommended changes. If you examine the latest draft of this policy, you'll note the wording changes in Article 2 and Article 3, and the inclusion of a new definition for the term "work week." Since the first reading, members of the community were requested to provide comments. We have not received any comments. The policy committee is recommending the approval of the second reading of policy GCBDA as amended. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy GCBDA entitled "Family and Medical Leave."
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. A second?
Second.
Dr. Hardings, thank you. Mrs. Fisher, would you like to make any comments on your motion?
Just that it obviously did pass on first read, and the only changes were the addition of the definition, as Mr. Trotta said, and some, the same very minor grammatical change, I think, in three paragraphs or in three locations.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Ms. Williams?
Yes, looking at number four, Policy Statement and Procedures. D, the superintendent is authorized to promulgate an administrative regulation that sets forth the procedures for applying for family and medical leave. And I'm wondering how all of what is no longer going to be in the policy will be addressed as things like condition of leave, notice and reporting requirements, retention of employee benefits. I wouldn't think that would fall under procedures for applying. It appears that that statement limits the regulations that the superintendent will write to how one applies for that leave. So, I'm just wondering if more needs to be in this policy.
I think right now, there are two, there is a policy which you've seen, you know, was very lengthy, and then the procedures that accompanied that policy, there was a lot of duplication between the two. I think the intention is to set forth the board's stance on family medical leave and to provide some of those basic definitions, and then use the procedures to outline how one is considered to be eligible, and then the procedures that they would follow to how they would get the paperwork, what's going to happen when the paperwork is received, and so forth.
Ms. Fisher?
I believe also that those items that are going to be put in the regulation are things that could change from time to time. And it's much easier to change a regulation than it is to change the policy.
Yes, Ms. Williams?
I understand that, but again, D addresses the procedures for applying, but says nothing about the conditions of leave, or the reporting of leave, or, or any of those things that currently exist in this policy. So, perhaps the wording of D needs to be changed so that it does address those things? How would, how would an employee know about those things if the regulations only address how one applies?
We can definitely make some adjustments to that statement if you'd be more comfortable with doing that, and we can say that sets forth the procedures for applying and, I guess, the circumstances surrounding. I mean, we can come up with something to...
Ms. Keller, let me interrupt. We're on second read. So, anything that becomes a significant change basically puts it back into the policy. When we discussed this in the policy committee, did you have concern at that time that this, if I'm understanding Mrs. Williams' question, that there's a concern as to how employees would receive information? And maybe it would help if you explained how the process works now?
Sure. The way the process works now is if we, we either identify that a staff member needs to be on FMLA based on their, their absences, or an employee, the ideal situation is the employee contacts us in advance and lets us know that they're going to be out for an extended period of time, and they need, they need to use FMLA, or they want to know what FMLA is. At that point, we gather some information. We have to determine first if they're even eligible to apply for family leave. And if they're deemed eligible, then we send them the necessary paperwork. And then, there are specific timeframes that have to be adhered to for them to be able to return that paperwork to our office. And at that time, if everything is complete, then we issue an approval of family medical leave, and then we track their time from there.
So, let me see if I can offer an edit. And with that editorial change, I think I have the latitude then to promulgate and address all of the issues that you're talking about.
Would you like an amendment? Let me just ask a clarification. Mr. Trotta, if we do an amendment on this to add that, would you see this needing to go back to a first-read status?
You know, I would not. I see that as just a minor adjustment. The other point I would share with the members of the Board, there are hundreds of pages of federal regulations that govern...
Turn the mic around, it's gotten...
There are hundreds of pages of federal regulations that govern this process, so the policy is intended to provide an overview, and the regulation will deal with situations where employees will be filing for that leave, and then a determination has to be made as to whether they qualify for that leave. And once again, there are federal standards that apply. So I see that as a minor adjustment that would not require the rescheduling of a first reading.
So back to Mrs. Williams, do you have a motion in there?
I do. Madam President, I move to amend policy GCBDA, number four, Policy Statement Procedures, Item D, to read, the superintendent is authorized to promulgate an administrative regulation that sets forth the procedures for applying for and utilizing family and medical leave.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Harshman? Any further discussion on this amendment? Okay, does everyone understand the amendment at this point, and that it will stay at a second read through? All right, the question is on Mrs. Williams' amendment. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Five in favor, two opposed. Motion passes. All right, the next item...
We still need to hold on the main motion.
Oh, sorry. We're back to the main motion that Dr. Hardings made. All those in favor? No. Mrs. Fisher made. All those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Sorry for the confusion. Thank you, Ms. Keller.
Thank you.
All right, on to our second unfinished business consideration, second reading to rescind policy IE, School District Organization Plan, policy IF, IG. I think those are the three. Mr. Trotta?
Thank you very much. At the Board of Education's Public Business Meeting conducted on April the 7th, the Board approved the rescission of policy IE, IF, and IG. Since the first reading, members of the committee were provided with an opportunity to provide comments. No comments were received. The policy committee is recommending the second reading of these policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam President, I move to approve the second reading to rescind policy IE, School District Organization Plan, policy IF, Curriculum Development, and policy IG, Curriculum Development, Adoption and Review.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. A second?
Second.
Mr. Ridenhour? Ms. Fisher, would you like to add any comments to your motion?
Just simply that these items are all covered in Maryland law, and therefore unnecessary to be repeated in our policies.
Okay, very good. Any discussion? Question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion. All those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trotta. All right, we're on to new business. We have a consent agenda. Mrs. Freeman?
Good evening, Mrs. Brightman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the Board of Education. I hope you can hear me this evening through the microphone. Six items for your consideration this evening. The first item is to purchase a CNC milling machine for the Career and Technology Education Program at Williamsport High School. This milling machine will replace an existing machine, which is currently not operational, and they need a CNC machine for their metals manufacturing program. This price is $36,249, and it is from a Howard County Public Schools contract. The order would be placed in Midwest Technology Products. Second on the agenda is the lease of a digital production press, a color primary unit. Proposals were solicited to select a vendor for this printing press, which will be, replace an existing press in the print center. A new digital press will replace the press that is five years old and has required quite a bit of service of late to maintain its operability. This existing lease ends June 30th. The Procurement Review Committee recommends that we go forward with a proposal by Canon Solutions America for a Canon Image Press C800 under a five-year lease at an annual price of $56,412.41. This price does include all consumable supplies and maintenance to the unit. The lease period, as I said, was 60 months, five years, starting July 1st. The third item on the agenda is a lease of 113 multifunction unit slash copiers. We solicited and received proposals in order to select a vendor for a lease for these 113 units to be installed in 47 school facilities throughout the school district. The specifications required that the leases be under a pooled volume of 36 million black and white impressions annually. We did have a pre-bid meeting, we had good attendance, and we did have robust competition under the bid. The provision of toner, staples, and replacement parts when needed, and all servicing to maintain the copiers, was included in the proposals. In addition, pricing was requested for the removal and disposal of the existing 121 old OSA multifunction units. The evaluation team looked at the bids for a fair market value lease, as well as a $1 buyout lease, and the $1 buyout lease is being recommended. The lowest bidder, Phillips Office Solutions, is proposing to provide 113 Kiosara Task Alpha 8001i copiers at an annual cost of $265,278.43. In addition, it is recommended that the units be purchased, configured, and ready to install print management software, which will help us control the number of copies that we're using in the school system, as well as hopefully paper purchases. That adds $5,499 to the lease. So the annual rate for the lease, as recommended, is $270,777.43. The cost per copy compares very, very favorably to current and recent lease purchases. As a 60-month term effective July 1 of 2015, and Phillips Office Solutions has a very solid relationship with Kiosara, and the recommended copier has been demoed and tested in this building just fairly recently, so we're very familiar with the equipment that would be provided to our schools under the lease. Item four is a health suite expansion at North Hagerstown High School. This is an interior renovation project. It will expand and improve the health suite to meet current standards for the students enrolled at the high school. An administrative office area adjacent to the main office will be converted into a new health suite that would include an office, an exam room, a treatment area, a resting area, and two restrooms, and some storage. This work would be performed in the summer, and the lowest responsive and responsible bidder is being recommended, Eagle Construction Company, at a total price of $89,960. Another bid with very good competition. Item six on the agenda is the utilization of a State of Maryland contract for our local telecommunications requirements. The local telecommunications requirements includes the local network lines and local telephone service, and call usage from the telephone company to its schools and offices in this Hagerstown local access and transport area. Washington County Public Schools, we anticipate, will spend $275,000 annually for local telecommunications services. The Procurement Review Committee recommends that we continue to utilize the State of Maryland contract with Verizon Maryland for as long as that contract continues to provide good prices, and we're satisfied with the services we've received from Verizon. Item six on the agenda is to provide and configure an IBM Blade Server for the network. We did receive quotations. This order is being recommended to be placed to the Tamalpass Group of Frederick, Maryland at a price tag of $33,735. This company has done work for the school system, has provided us equipment for our network in the past. Concludes my bids this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Requires a motion?
Madam President, excuse me. I move to approve the following bids, proposals for the purchase of first, a CNC milling machine for the CTE at Williamsport High School, to Midwest Technology Products at $36,249. Lease a colored digital production press for the print shop going to Canon Solutions America Incorporated at $282,062.5 for a five-year term. Lease 113 multifunction unit copiers for 47 schools to Phillips Office Solutions at $1,353,887.15 for a five-year term. Health suite expansion at North Hagerstown High School to the Eagle Construction at $89,960. Local telecommunications services to Verizon Maryland Inc. at State of Maryland contract rates. Provide and configure an IBM Blade Server to Tamplis, I'm sorry, Payas, Tamplis Group Inc. at $33,735.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. A second?
Second.
Dr. Hardings, thank you. Questions or comments? Staff is here? Answer?
Just say it's exciting to see the Career and Technology Program at Tech High getting a CNC machine. That's a great opportunity for those kids, sort of the newest, I'm not sure how new it is, I imagine it's fairly new, sort of state-of-the-art type machining-type equipment, which, as someone who signs a lot of contracts with machinists, we need good machinists, and it's great to see that the focus of our career technology education at places even other than the technical high school are really emphasizing this sort of skills for our students. So I was glad to see that.
Great. Your comments? Questions? Question is on Mr. Ridenhour's motion. All those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to new business. Mr. Trotta, I guess there he is. First reading of proposed changes to policy JGB.
Policy Committee consulted with staff with regard to policy JGB, which is entitled "Portable Electronic Communication Devices in Schools." The Policy Committee conducted four separate work sessions on this policy, and it is offering the following recommendations at this time. First, that the policy be relettered as policy JICJ. This is what is recommended by the National School Boards Association. That the policy be retitled as follows, "Use of Personally-Owned Electronic Devices." The next recommendation is that the policy be placed in a new format in accordance with policy BG. And finally, that the Board adopt the proposed changes to this policy, which encourages the use of personally-owned electronic devices as a part of a student's normal academic program. This would be with the permission of a teacher or administrator. I next want to provide you with an overview of the changes to the policy. The first is, under Article 1, the policy sets forth its purpose and makes it clear that students may use personally-owned devices, subject to certain requirements. Article 2 defines that term, personally-owned electronic devices. Article 3 summarizes the educational benefits of allowing students to use such devices in a school setting. And also, in Article 3, you'll note that it makes clear that the usage of such devices shall not disrupt the educational environment, violate the rights of others, or violate the Board's acceptable-use policy. And finally, Article 3 provides that a student is solely responsible for his or her device. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Motion?
Yes, Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of the proposed changes to policy JGB entitled "Portable Electronic Communication Devices in Schools."
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Mr. Hardings, thank you. Questions or comments? Staff is here?
Just say it's exciting to see the Career and Technology Program at Tech High getting a CNC machine. That's a great opportunity for those kids, sort of the newest, I'm not sure how new it is, I imagine it's fairly new, sort of state-of-the-art type machining-type equipment, which, as someone who signs a lot of contracts with machinists, we need good machinists, and it's great to see that the focus of our career technology education at places even other than the technical high school are really emphasizing this sort of skills for our students. So I was glad to see that.
Great. Your comments? Questions? Question is on Mr. Ridenhour's motion. All those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to new business. Mr. Trotta, I guess there he is. First reading of proposed changes to policy JGB.
Policy Committee consulted with staff with regard to policy JGB, which is entitled "Portable Electronic Communication Devices in Schools."
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Mr. Ridenhour, thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
As Mr. Trotta said, we spent four sessions working on this particular policy. It wasn't something taken lightly. We had many discussions with Technology Department, based also on what we had learned earlier this year about the increased use of such devices in classes by many teachers, and also after studying the fact that many, many school districts are allowing personally-owned devices in their schools, and we also looked at some of their policies as well in helping to put this policy together. So I recommend passage of this particular policy.
Very good, thank you. Questions?
Ms. Harshman? I'm just wondering if we have something in place for violation, violations of this, because I know this has been an issue in many schools. So is there already a Board policy or regulation for what can be used in schools, or is this the first incident, this policy? Will this be the first one that has been set forth, or is there already some kind Or is there already some kind of punishment?
Mrs. Fisher?
If you look under Roman numeral three, Policy Statement and Procedures, and go all the way down to letter E, it's entitled disciplinary consequences. And there will also be administrative regulations written for this as well, which I would expect would also include some disciplinary considerations.
Are any of those in effect at this time? Do you know? Or are any of those in effect? Most of that's in blue. That's why I was wondering.
If a device was not properly used by a student in accordance with this policy, then they could be subject to disciplinary action. And that would be covered under E. The other recommendation of Policy Committee, if you examine the last page, there's a number of other related policies that are referenced in this particular policy. And in particular, we have the acceptable use policy. And that sets forth a number of do's and don'ts as far as the use of electronic devices.
Okay, that may be the one that I had heard was not very well enforced, but this should wrap it up.
You know, we are not, I'm not getting any types of complaints or concerns that have come through my office with regard to use of devices.
I know they're different at different schools. So, that's what I was concerned about. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments on the first read? Ms. Williams?
Letter C, no expectation of technology support. I'm just wondering why not a stronger statement? WCPS staff will not provide technology support for a student's personally-owned electronic device.
Again, we talked about that in the meeting. And it was suggested that if a teacher, if somebody was having problems with their device, if a teacher had the time, he or she might choose to take a moment or two to help somebody with that problem. We decided not to totally restrict them from doing it, but to make sure that students understood that it wasn't expected of the teacher or aide in the room to help them navigate a program or fix something wrong with whatever their device is.
Ms. Williams or Ms. Harshman?
Just one other concern, and I didn't see it in here, which I may be missing it, but the geofence, is there, is this affecting this policy within the schools also? And do we have anything, any reports on how that's working?
Well, certainly, if somebody uses one of the social media tools like Twitter or something that's geolocated, we would see them. If a kid was tweeting, we would see it. Right now, we get daily updates as from kids who are using it, but we're not finding kids using technology in appropriate light right now, at least in the few that I read, so.
All right. Thank you.
But I think, I'll just say this, I think these two technologies will go hand-in-hand.
Yes?
I just have a question with regard to the student handbook that we put out. Does our acceptable use policy get published in that? I'm thinking that policy and this policy would be of particular interest to parents and students. Mrs. Fisher's comment that students would want to know that there is no expectation, and I don't know how many students would happen upon this policy unless it were in...
I think it would find its way into student handbooks as well as into the AUP.
AUP. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Brightman?
Yes?
I think this is a policy that's thinking in the right direction. It's more enabling to allow students to use their devices rather than the old policy, which was very, had the assumption that no student could use a device in school. And as I've talked to some of my colleagues from other counties, other states, one of the comments I kept hearing when I asked, you know, do you have a policy that says students are allowed to use their devices? Some of them, the more progressive ones, said, "No." Do you have a policy saying that students could use pencils? Now, that's going a little overboard, I think. But I think it's already an expectation in most of our schools that students, once they reach a certain age, they have and they use devices. I know my children, as young as sixth grade, have had many occasions in school where the teachers assume that each of their students has a device, has a device with them, and has access to it. And that's evidenced by there, some teachers saying, "I need you to go and download this app." And that'll be during instructional time, because the app is something they want to use as part of instruction. So, I think updating the policy in this way not only helps us think towards what education looks like, but I think it also helps bring us into compliance with really what's happening in our classrooms anyway. So, I'm pleased to support it and hope that this will give our students and our teachers one more tool to provide great instruction for our kids.
Thank you, Dr. Hardings. Other questions, comments? All right, the question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion. All those in favor? Looks like seven-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mr. Trotta. All right. Consideration on, I believe, Mr. Rollins and Dr. Michael will be taking the lead on the presentation of the Academic Hub Resolution. Welcome.
Good afternoon. President Brightman, members of the board, Dr. Wilcox. We're here on behalf of Dr. Wilcox this evening, seeking your approval. I laid down the wrong device here. Okay. Seeking your approval for an academic resolution regarding the Academic Hub for downtown Hagerstown. Before you have a four-page resolution, that gives very specific direction to Dr. Wilcox and staff members of how to proceed possibly with this interest in pursuing an academic hub. We did receive an unsolicited proposal from Bowman Development Group for a building of approximately fifty-one thousand six hundred square feet. The current estimated cost of the building is fifteen-point-five million dollars. If favorable bidding is acquired by the developer, there is an opportunity for Washington County to enjoy either low bids or an opportunity to accept additional alternates. The proposal also identifies, and the Board of Education would own that building at the end of the construction period. The proposal also suggest or author, or provides an opportunity for a twenty-year lease at a hundred thousand a year. And at the end of that time period, the Board of Education would own the property as well. As the board's aware, we've been looking for academic space to support the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts, some other expansion of Barbara Ingram, and particularly other downtown boutique schools that also could be housed in this building, or the academic support could be from this building, and the boutiques might be located in another area. The resolution specifically provides Dr. Wilcox the authority to seek permission from the state superintendent. We need her permission for alternative financing. We need her permission to pursue a building that's over three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, not involving state funding. It would also allow Dr. Wilcox to contact Dr. Lieber, who's the executive director of the Interagency Committee, and provide information to them relative to the project. Allows him to seek permission from the Board of County Commissioners for the project, separate of the funding. We do, it does require that we have their permission to construct the project. It also authorizes Dr. Wilcox and staff to pursue funding for the project, whether it be the proposal as presented or other proposals that I'll get to in just a minute that could be presented. Any amount of four million from the current board reserve fund, ask the city of Hagerstown for one-point-five million in funding, ask the county commissioners for upfront funding of four million from their capital program or other funds that they would see appropriate, and also seek an opportunity to borrow up to six million dollars from the county commissioners that would be paid back by the Board of Education in the future to support if the project were indeed fifteen-point-five million dollars. Another part of the requirement of an unsolicited proposal is an opportunity for competition. So, this resolution would also authorize Dr. Wilcox to seek other proposals. So, we would prepare a document that would go out, much like a bid would be an RFP, requesting other people to present proposals that they'd want to have considered. Dr. Wilcox and staff would review the Bowman proposal thoroughly, would review other proposals, if any are received thoroughly, compare them in an equitable manner between each other. And then, if the board chose to support the resolution, Dr. Wilcox was successful in all the pieces and parts of the resolutions, bring back at some future meeting, the successful proposal for your consideration to move forward. At this time, we'd be glad to entertain any questions or anything you might have.
Ms. Bright?
Yes?
I simply want to say to the board that I think this is an important moment for this board. It's an important moment because what we're saying is that we, as a board, can be both fiscally responsible and in tune with what the needs of our kids are. If you remember, this conversation began some time ago when we were talking about the need for a comprehensive high school. And I began to talk to some of you as board members about drawing down enrollments and better utilizing some of the facilities that we had, finding ways to get more kids into Washington County Technical High School, finding ways to reuse space like seven-oh-one North Frederick, finding ways to use space within this building perhaps. We began talking about that. We've been talking about where our young people might be able to extend their education through internships and externships. And perhaps most importantly, it wasn't lost on this board and members of our community, that pushing down the road, the construction of perhaps, or eliminating perhaps, the cost of an eighty to an eighty-five million dollar high school seemed to be a worthy goal, seemed to be a smart way to approach the needs of our kids. And so, we began over three years ago talking about how this project might come to light. I think we've presented to you a very fiscally responsible and somewhat conservative approach to spending fifteen-point-five million dollars over the next few years for a building that will last this year over fifty years, if you look at the way we're required to construct facilities. Pushing off a huge debt load into the foreseeable future. So, I would encourage the board to view this from a number of perspectives. First, doing the right thing by our young people, creating academic spaces that are worthy of them, that also reflect where education's going in the 21st century. Smaller learning centers focused on kids who have a passion and an interest for improving themselves personally. Being respectful of the fact that our business community is talking about the need to have kids who have internships and practical experiences within the related disciplines of the businesses of this county. And thirdly, I would encourage you to think about this as a way to say to taxpayers around this community, yes, we're spending fifteen-point-five million dollars now, but that is to offset the expense of probably eighty million dollars or more in the foreseeable future. So, again, I would encourage you to support this set of resolutions and give us the opportunity to proceed carefully, methodically, but also with some pace. And with that, we'll turn it to questions.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. This requires a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the resolution regarding the Academic Hub.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Hardings. We are now open for discussion. Questions? Mr. Gessford?
Fellow board members, I will not be supporting something I do not have all the information on today. In my opinion, we have elementary schools and middle schools that need renovations and repair, and they keep being overlooked. We have teachers that don't have daily supplies to do their job, paper shortages, parents being asked to bring supplies, and we're, teachers taking their personal monies to buy supplies. I know they don't do this because they, I know they do this because they love to teach, but why should they have to? I ask why we would have built a school without a cafeteria or enough classrooms to handle the next twenty years of growth is beyond comprehensive to me. Now, we want more classrooms and a cafeteria. Safety issues are a concern. We have students that are walking across the street that need a policeman, a principal. City safety officers just escort them across the street, class to class. We are now going to be adding a vice principal for two-hundred-and-seventy-seven students that also walk students to and from classes on the street. The cost per student, I'm looking at numbers that was just given to me at twelve-thousand four-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. But yet, at South High, those same students get seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-one per student. I know there's variables, but the bottom line is we spent four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars as a difference. We do not have enough money set aside to move forward unless we borrow monies, putting the burden on the county government and the taxpayer. At this time, it might be a stretch since we already receive fifty-two percent of the county budget. Now, before anyone prints that I'm not in support of Barbara Ingram School, that is not true. I acknowledge that we have a space problem, and I think Mrs. Fisher had a great idea to keep the performing arts downtown with like drama dance band, but move some of the other things out and put a cafeteria and classroom into something that we already have. I think it's a good idea to keep it next to the Maryland Theater so that we can partner with them and then revisit this in two to three years when the county enrollment and funds have increased. If we just can't separate the classes, maybe we're moving Barbara Ingram to Antietam Academy location and relocating the Academy, Antietam Academy elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Ms. Fisher?
I think I made a similar statement to what Mr. Gessford said as a last-ditch attempt that if we could not come up with the funds to increase the space at Barbara Ingram, maybe we would have to reduce the number of students there so that we could add the academic classes. I don't think, I think also Mr. Gessford has mixed two different things together here. He's talking about the hazards of walking, and yes, there may be some hazards of crossing streets now to get to academic classes. However, the hub would eliminate the need to be out on the street doing that. Also, in the comparison between the cost of Bispa students to South High students, I find rather awkward. I would think that the best comparison would be between Bispa and Tech because it offers a specialized program, whereas South High is a basic high school. But I do not know what the cost is of Tech High per student, but I do think that would be a more appropriate comparison. At this point, this is not a vote to tie us into any particular construction downtown. It's more, I see it as a kind of an exploratory step to see what's, perhaps, other ideas are out there, as well as being able to proceed with further information on this proposal. So, I will be voting for it tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Harshman?
Well, I think soliciting proposals without funding is a waste of the people who would set up the proposals. We don't even know if we have funding for this. In fact, from what I've heard, we do not. I also was concerned when the idea was mentioned by Dr. Wilcox of smaller learning centers, and yet we go out and build elementary schools that hold eight-hundred students. I'm thinking that for the elementary students, we should have kept our neighborhood schools and larger schools for, with different opportunities for the older students. Also, as far as out on the street, they would still have to cross the street downtown in order for parking because we do not have a place for parking, nor have we been guaranteed any place. I had a couple other concerns. The main thing is that without any, any kind of assurance of any monies from anyone, city or county, I think that we are looking at something that needs to be held back until we have that. So, I will not be voting for this.
Thank you, Ms. Hirschman. Mr. Ridnour.
Just a couple of things, and if I may, I may respond to a couple of things that were said in regards to this. We never have guarantee of any construction money until we ask for it, until we start moving forward, whether it's state, county, any school that we build, any construction project that we recommend or ask for, we have to ask for the money. Secondly, comparing Bispa to South High or any of our high schools has, it's problematic because if you do a per pupil cost analysis, it includes the, I believe, the lease agreement. That is added into the per pupil cost as well as the rented space. And I have heard over and over again from certain people that we made so many mistakes downtown, we didn't build it big enough, we didn't have a cafeteria. The cafeteria came about, and the idea for cafeteria was Dr. Wilcox's. He wanted to see the students have a cafeteria. The enrollment at Barbara Ingram grew every year, has grown pretty much every year since we opened it. And that includes those years when we didn't have a cafeteria. And the fact that we didn't have a cafeteria did not mean that our kids were not being fed. It meant they didn't have a cafeteria per se. They got fed, they didn't complain, they still wanted to be there. And if we didn't have a cafeteria today, they would still want to be there. So, you know, that makes no sense to me. You know, I've heard the issue of parking, we don't have parking downtown. Well, you know, we pay for parking downtown, so we do have parking. That's included in the per pupil cost. Are we going to include what we pay to plow our parking lots, to pave our parking lots, to fix potholes in our parking lots? That's not included in the per pupil cost at South Hagerstown. Are we going to amortize what we paid for South Hagerstown or any of our other schools and include that into their per pupil cost? No, we don't do that. Building's there. So, it's, it's not, there's no apples for apples here. We pay forty-five thousand plus dollars a year for our Marshall Street students and for our students at the Job Development Center. We pay fourteen thousand dollars a year for our students at Funkstown. I mean, all of these. And what are we going to say to those kids? I'm sorry, but we're going to try to make everything equal so that for every school gets twelve thousand dollars per student per year. How's that going to work? You know, and my, my question is, what's, how do we resolve the issues that we have downtown? These are issues we knew we were going to have. Over and over again, I've tried to say that to people. There is nothing that has happened at Barbara Ingram that we did not know about, that we did not say would happen. We knew that the enrollment at the University of Maryland was going to increase. We were confident it would, as were they. So, our MOU was written in a way that when that happened, we would get some type of notice so that we could plan for it. We're planning for it. You know, everything that's being done here with this resolution is a continuation of what we started when we started the Bispa project years ago. It's nothing more than a continuation. The only difference, the only difference is that we're looking forward instead of backward. We're looking at ways to not only deal with Barbara Ingram's issues and not only improve that program, but add programs that will benefit kids. It's what we do and what we should do. We don't pay cash for high schools or schools, period. We build them, we borrow money. The county borrows money, we borrow money. Barbara Ingram, we're paying for. This, in many ways, we will pay, we will pay for all of it, for all intents and purposes because we will be borrowing the money again, a bond, and we'll be paying back the county or whoever the bonding agency is. So, this is, this is nothing different. It is an attempt to move forward and not continually look back and say, oh, you did things so poorly. You didn't plan for this. Well, we did plan for it, and this is the next step in it. So, I give it my unqualified support. I'm proud to put my name to this. I am proud to say that we are going to provide our kids with something more or something new and save millions and millions of dollars by not having to, to build a comprehensive high school in the next five to ten years. Because I believe personally that within the next ten years, we may never, if we get by that timeframe, we may never need a comprehensive high school because the, the delivery of education is changing. And I think you're going to see less and less, particularly at the upper levels, of brick and mortar education. So, I support it. I'm proud of, of what we've done, and I'm proud of our staff for putting this together. I think it is something that will benefit our students in Washington County in general. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Ridnour?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Yes, I acknowledge and I agree that the students of the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts are in need of corrections to their current learning environment. They need additional classroom space, they need a cafeteria, they need science labs, most of which the school has been without since its opening. My concern is with the first two, whereas. I don't know that downtown Hagerstown is the place that I would put an academic hub. I, I believe that what we're looking at, what this proposal would do, would create additional space for the Barbara Ingram School and for the students there, but I don't know that it would allow for additional students to attend any new programs. I've not seen any plans that would tell me what those programs would be or what specialized courses or internships are feasible. I just don't know that downtown Hagerstown is a place for an academic hub. So, that first whereas limits us to downtown Hagerstown. I have concerns about financing. If some, I have a question, if I may ask that, Mrs. Brightman, and...
Absolutely, and I didn't know if you wanted clarification on the statement you just made about whether the resolution would limit any options to just downtown. I didn't know if you wanted clarification on that.
Sure, that's how I interpreted that first whereas.
Probably be up to Dr. Wilcox. Our intent right now, as we've looked at how we would address some of the mechanics of how the Barbara Ingram students move around, we were looking to address, you know, reducing class exchange time, their, to deal with their cafeteria issue, avoid them maybe crossing the street, depending upon the location. So, I think our intent right now is for a downtown building, but I would defer to Dr. Wilcox if it's limited to that. But I think in what we're trying to address with Barbara Ingram, this building that's proposed also has, I don't want to quote a figure, maybe Rob knows off the top of his head, eight or ten thousand expansion square footage in the building purposely to address any Barbara Ingram expansion of programs or other potentially boutique schools that we'd open. So, it would avoid the current lease costs at the Grand Piano Building, the Bridge of Life, our investment at the University of Maryland, other boutiques that we might try to open in other storefronts, could either be open there or possibly in this building.
But to clarify, the RFP would not be written specifically to exclude locations?
We would, we would need that direction from...
Specify locations.
Dr. Wilcox, because that'd be one of our criteria that we would be gauging, using to gauge proposals. So, I mean, if the board's interested in opening it up broader than downtown, I guess we would just need to know that.
I was just trying to get clarification. Thank you for continuing, Ms. Williams.
I'm just reading, and the first whereas says, "A new academic center located in the downtown Hagerstown Arts and Entertainment District." That, to me, is very specific and does not open things up to anything beyond downtown Hagerstown.
Okay, if I wasn't clear, if I wasn't clear, I'll say again, our current, what we're currently going to draft, or our draft proposal for soliciting other proposals would be in the immediate vicinity of Barbara Ingram.
Of the Barbara Ingram School.
But can that open up wider? That would be up to, you know, consideration against Dr. Wilcox. I'll have to defer to him. But the intention right now is to address, address that area.
May I continue?
Continue, yes. Then my questions with regard to number four and five on page two, the seeking of funding. If you could explain the process, please, of how we're going to seek that funding from those two entities. I understand that the city of Hagerstown is having their budget worked this afternoon, and I think the county has already completed theirs and plans to present it fifth of May. So, what, what would that process be where it says, "Seek funding"?
I think, again, that's the opportunity we're looking for, permission for Dr. Wilcox and/or for staff to go out and to seek that funding. I don't think it's a secret to the county commissioners or to the city of Hagerstown that we're interested in this project. These numbers have been shared with the county commissioners in open sessions, to my knowledge, and publicly off and on for the last six months. So, seek funding might be, seek it now, seek it next year, seek it two years, whenever that funding might be available. But we, to Mr. Ridnour's point, we have to ask, we can't ask until we have the approval to, to seek the funding. I think the term is very purposeful.
And I think to be specific, when you look at item three, to secure and dedicate four million dollars to the board's fund balances, I think we've talked about that significantly, and we're going to continue that conversation. When you seek four million dollars from the county commission, the amount of, the amount of four million dollars, we've been very clear that we're looking for some CIP dollars for them to either reassign them from a project that we have or somebody else has. But we wouldn't limit them, we're not capable of them. If they wanted to just do it out of their discretionary funds, they could do that as well. And then we have been, I think, very clear about saying that in order to close the funding gap, we would need an additional six million dollars. We've had conversations with them about increasing their borrowing authority. You know, I read the papers too, I know that they're a bit reluctant to do that, but I think we can now, with the board's permission, we can make a pretty strong financial case as to why it might be in their best long-term interest to do this. But we can't ask unless the board gives us the approval through this resolution.
And, Mrs. Williams, I just wanted to be sure that you're not confusing the operating budget, that I believe the county commissioners are going to have the public hearing on, on the fifth, and a capital discussion of capital dollars.
So, that's what we're looking at, their capital.
We're looking, we're looking at capital dollars here. So, but go ahead.
Okay, I just had one more question, and that, that deals with the six million dollars that we're planning to, or we would be asking the commissioners to loan us or make it possible for us to pay. The funds that we would be using would come from our operating budget, is that correct?
Correct.
So, in addition to the six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars that we're paying currently, how much would we be paying additionally? Can you give me a total, that six, six hundred and fifty-four thousand plus whatever the, that is, an estimate?
Until the county goes to the bond market and actually determines a rate for repayment for us, it's hard to say. But, you know, my sense is we're in the four to five hundred thousand dollar annual repayment cycle. I refer to others who are smart, smarter about this kind of stuff, but, you know, that's kind of what we're thinking, four hundred plus thousand dollars, and that's six million dollars at three percent over twenty years. Obviously, you can stretch terms and do things like that. But again, we don't have the answer to those questions until we actually go out and talk to the county commissioners. I've had some preliminary conversations with Mr. Murray, but he certainly couldn't commit, just like I couldn't commit to you for what they, what that might look like. We've never talked about the specific ask, but...
Additional questions, Mrs. Williams?
Just one more.
Sure.
This eighty million dollar high school, those funds would not come out of our operating budget, those would come out of capital improvement funds, correct?
That would have to be a CIP project, funding between state and local.
And our portion of that eighty million would be approximately?
Zero.
Zero?
We would not. That would be a state and county obligation, fully.
Okay, locally. Then let's talk locally, not, not us, but the county's obligation would be...
The county's obligation on eighty-five million dollars would far exceed fifteen point five million. So, if the county paid a hundred percent of this project, that'd help us avoid a long-term high school. It would be in the county's interest when you look at it in those types of terms. I mean, right now, we currently enjoy a seventy-one, twenty-nine percent participation on any project of eligible costs with the state. So, it'd be twenty-nine percent of eighty-five million. But in the eighty-five million would probably be two, three and a half million of architect fees, which all would be local money, other eligible costs, furniture, equipment, those types of things. So, I, I don't want to put a figure to it either at this point, but it, it would well exceed fifteen point five million dollars from the county, local level.
Thank you.
You know, Rob's saying thirty to forty million dollars, as much as that.
Absolutely.
And I think that might be one selling feature with the county commissioners. They do have money in the out years in their CIP for high school expansion, you know, kind of undetermined what that is. So, I think that'd be part of our pitch, would be, this is the high school expansion. This will help us in many ways as we continue. We'll, we'll increase the enrollment at the hub, at boutiques, at Barbara Ingram if we had this facility. The facility's about twice the size of Barbara Ingram. Fifty, if the, the current proposal would be the successful proposal, fifty-one thousand six hundred square feet, you know, substantially bigger. I think Barbara Ingram's about twenty-seven, five.
Finished. More questions?
Can we come back then?
Absolutely. We'll come back around.
Perfect, perfect.
Mr. Ridnour.
Just, just to, to respond, Mrs. Williams, I think, I'm almost certain you're aware that we have a, a buyout clause in our lease with Bispa right now, that at the end of ten years, and this was a, you know, this was a funding model that we hoped to improve, obviously, this time around. But we have a buyout clause at the end of ten years. We can pay off the remainder of our indebtedness, which would mean that that lease amount would go out of our operating budget. And I'm certain we would try to work out a similar situation with financing with this particular project. And remember too, that each year, you know, we typically, depending on turnover credit, depending on energy cost and other things that, that allow us to, to put money into our fund balance, we are in a position at the end of the year to say, okay, we have a million dollars, and if we, you know, set up our financing in such a way that we can pay down, that is a way that the, you know, each time you pay something down, obviously, if you put a little extra on your, your principal, the amount of indebtedness goes down and your, your interest payment goes down also. So, there are, you know, there are a variety of different ways that, that we're not going to have, or we may not have as much money coming out of our, our operating budget as it may appear initially. You know, over a course of time, that, that changed, that will change, obviously. So, I just wanted to make that clear that, you know, let's see, what is it, four years away, Rob, or three years away, we can pay it off?
Three.
Four?
Two thousand and eight, I believe, nine.
So, that would mean three years.
Yeah.
In three years, we can pay it off if we decide, make a decision that, okay, we'd like to take X number of million dollars from the fund balance and pay this off and take that off of our books.
Dr. Hardings?
Yes, thank you. Many things I'd like to say, but I'll, I'll keep it as brief as I can. I think the point is right, that you can't look at a twelve thousand dollar per pupil cost at the Barbara Ingram School and compare that to another facility where the capital costs aren't included. If I'm a, if I'm a business owner and I own the Acme Widget Company, and you ask me how much it costs to build a widget, if I don't include the cost of my facilities or the machine tools I use to make the widget, then I'm not really giving you the cost of what it takes to make a widget. I think the same thing, I mean, somebody built South Hagerstown High School, in fact, it was renovated not too long ago. I imagine the county's still paying the debt on the renovation, or somebody is, the state probably is.
Could be, yes.
So, all of those are costs that if you're going to do a, apples-to-apples comparison, you have to, to connect. I was just going to ask the superintendent if, you know, what about a school like Winter Street or Connekejeeg, or would you have a sense of what the per pupil costs are in schools like that? Again, not including capital?
Not including capital, probably ten thousand dollars or so per kid. They're small schools with staff that are fairly senior.
Because if, if I take...
I would say ten thousand.
If I take the twelve thousand four hundred per student at Barbara Ingram, and then I take the cost of the lease, which is six... which is 600...
36,000.
$36,000 per year, divided by the number of kids, which is 277, that comes out to $2,300 of that 12,500 is the cost of the lease. Now, would it be more or less if I did the same analysis based on the debt and what it cost to build South Hagerstown High School? I don't know, but if I subtract that out, I get less than $10,000 per student. So these comparisons are tricky. I mean, I, I'm sure it costs more to educate a kid at Marshall Street than it does at probably any school in the county. I happen to think spending the money on those kids is the right thing to do. A couple of other comments, you know, I wasn't on the board when they made the decision to build the Barbara Ingram School. So I, you know, I don't know what went into the decisions at the time. I can tell you, I can go to any school in the county and find things that I wish were different. There's not a middle school I walk into that I don't think, why did they build these open classroom schools? But that's the schools we got, and we either got to change it, we got to deal with the school system we have, not the school system that we wish somebody had built a long time ago. So to me, we do need a solution for these students. I think also that there is an opportunity to provide more experiences like these students are having and clearly embracing for other students who want to pursue other academic pursuits. A couple of other things, you, you end up in a chicken and the egg problem here, right? Because you can go to the commissioners and ask for money, but they want to see the project first. Well, show me the project, then I'll tell you if you have the money. But then, on the other hand, how do you know if you can do the project if you don't know you have the money? And I think we have tried over the last two years to be as clear and transparent as we could possibly be regarding this project. We presented in open session here, we've presented in open session with both the commissioners and with the Hagerstown mayor and council, all using exactly the figures that the superintendent mentioned earlier and that are in this, this resolution. So I think we've been very clear about what we're after. At every single one of those occasions, I think I asked the commissioners and the mayor and council, if you think this is a bad project and you want to slam the brakes on it, tell us now. So far, we haven't heard that. Now, we may hear it soon, we may hear it from this board tonight, I don't know. But I think we've been very clear and transparent with the public, with our colleagues who are also elected officials, about what our intentions are. I'm excited when I go to the technical high school, or when I go to Barbara Ingram, and I see kids who spend part of their day learning about things that they love, and another part of their day doing their academic classes. And I would hope that we can find ways, whether it's this project or not, that we can give that experience to more kids in high school. Because I think that's what's going to prepare them to walk out of our schools and be prepared for the world of work and innovation and creativity that I think is going to lead this community in the future. So that's all I have. I support the project and look forward to hopefully seeing it move ahead. Thank you, Mrs. Brightman.
Thank you, Dr. Hardings. Questions, comments? Mrs. Fisher?
Two quick things. I worry about kids, the students from Biswa crossing the street downtown, but I sat here and thought about it, and there are kids from every school crossing busy streets. And perhaps the ones from Biswa are safer because they're in a group. It's not one little tiny kid trying to run across the street where somebody might not see him or her. The other thing is, and I'm, I think I'm correct on this, despite all the issues that Biswa students face, with its cafeteria, crossing streets, going to another building to take their classes, I believe every year that school has come out number one academically in our county.
In the county?
And I, I attribute that to the fact that they're doing something they like, they're doing something they believe is going to shape their future, and it spills over into their academics. I don't want to take that away from them, I want to enhance it.
Thank you. Other questions? Mrs. Harshman?
I just have a comment. I don't think anyone here wants to take anything away from the kids. I think we want what's best for the kids and what will, in the final analysis, serve them best. And to continue to make projects that need tweaking in a year or two, or three years, just like no cafeteria and no classrooms, to me is, is foolish. So I, and I do believe that, that we have a very large problem as far as the money is concerned, because I do not feel that we are going to be supported by the county commissioners, nor do I think the city is going to step up since I believe they were near bankrupt. But that's where I'm coming from. So until, until we can come up with something, and at one point in time Jackie did, or Mrs. Fisher did mention about moving some people out, some groups out from down there, and personally, I think that's an excellent idea, to move them to another location and to use the building that's already there to put a cafeteria and classrooms in, and find a new location for programs down there that really don't have to be in the center of Hagerstown, such as creative writing, pottery making, and so on. They could be shown off in the, that particular area, but they don't have to be done in that particular area. So I think we are kind of looking at a pie in the sky, and I don't think that we will get funding for it, so I will not be voting for it.
Thank you, Ms. Harshman. Ms. Williams, you said you wanted to have a second go-around?
Yeah, I did ask about that, thank you. We're back to me. I, I think I've had all my questions answered. Again, I, I do feel that something needs to be done to correct the situation at the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. An academic hub is a wonderful thing, but I don't know that downtown Hagerstown is a place that could support such an academic hub as I'm envisioning that would support many new boutique programs. You know, if that, that idea of an academic hub is just a way to sell what needs to be done to correct Biswa, I can't buy that. So that's my position.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Can I, can I ask one question?
Yes, fine.
What, what would the capacity of the building is envisioned so far by the unsolicited, unsolicited proposal include? How many students?
Barbara Ingram's rated at about 150 students, so I'd just guess off the top of my head approximately 300 students.
So 350 students in the, did you say 300 or 350?
300 in the hub.
300 in the hub.
150 in Barbara Ingram, so capacity about 450.
So it'd be twice the capacity of what's needed for the students at Barbara Ingram.
And remember, we have 277 kids currently at Barbara Ingram.
Thank you.
I, I think, you know, one of the things, and the phrase was used a moment ago about the chicken and the egg, and I want to share with Mrs. Williams that, at least from the administration standpoint, and I certainly know from the side of the unsolicited proposal, none of us have thought about this as a way to simply correct what some have now identified as shortfalls with Barbara Ingram. I, I tend to agree with Mr. Ridnauer because I was here, and one of the first buildings I visited was Barbara Ingram, and I think my comment to Wayne as the president at that time is, this feels too loose in here with the kids eating and the floor, but they were all happy. Kids were excited, you walked over them, and I just said, you know, Wayne, I've got to try to address that. So that wasn't something that the Barbara Ingram kids or the faculty said, that was a new superintendent who said, "I'm concerned about this." And so we negotiated the lease across the street. But I want to come back to the point, you know, we've now created the Public Service Academy at 701 North Frederick, and we have, you know, 35, 40 kids that are going over there every other day. They're taking their academic classes at Washington County Technical High School, and then they're coming over and taking their practical classes in their disciplines on the opposite days. We expect to add a third leg to that stool shortly, which I believe is going to be focused on homeland security, some aspect of that, a little bit different than what's at North High, excuse me, at South High, but still kind of related in that security-related disciplines. What we hope would happen is some of those kids, we'd start taking their classes in the academic hub. We've also talked, and you may remember, back when we were in 820 Commonwealth, we had a meeting in the auditorium, and we talked about moving some of our computer classes, whether it be graphic design or digital animation studios, down to the academic hub. And why did we talk about it? If you remember, we talked about the emergence of organizations like High Rock downtown, some of the other tech companies that are now downtown, we thought we could give kids internships down there. Remember, at one time, we also talked about providing a venue for some of our culinary arts students to come down and have internships in some of the restaurants downtown. At one time, we even talked about moving cosmetology downtown and putting a storefront in where we could then help to serve some of the towers. I think if you go back and read some of your Herald Mail articles, you'll see that we talked about that. Now, I will tell you that I've subsequently learned that moving cosmetology was not the right thing to propose at the time because of the high cost of moving all of the sinks and all of the plumbing and creating a storefront, and then getting in competition with one of our partners right downtown, who also is, has a pretty good business model going, by the way, downtown, so we wouldn't want to be in direct competition with them. Actually, I'd welcome it, but I don't think they would. So we do have some ideas, but it's, again, that chicken and the egg. I mean, I can't really go out and start building programs and placing them downtown without the classroom space. But I also am now kind of caught with, I don't need the classroom space till I have the programs. You know, our commitment is to move towards boutique schools because we think it's the right thing to do for kids. I think some of the corollary benefits of the deferred cost to our taxpayers, if you look at down the road, I think that that's a powerful piece. And I hope it won't be lost on the county commissioners. I think any good business would take a look at what their debt service was, they would look at the interest rate associated with that, and if there were opportunities to negotiate that down, they would consider doing that. I think those are things that we're doing to show that we're progressive and, and financial steward of resources. I'm going to say, you know, one of the things that has amazed me a little bit about my tenure in Maryland is how people just all of a sudden assume that debt is bad. Debt is not necessarily a bad thing if it advances a great purpose, and I think this is a great purpose. I, I can't identify something that is an incredibly worthy project that is paid for from dollar one, or actually even doesn't need, require a modification or tweak once it gets built, because you learn things during the construction phase, you learn things during the usage. I mean, I, I'm reminded of the fact that when the University of Maryland system and other institutions build new campuses, they don't put the sidewalks in at first, why not? Because they want to see the paths that the kids will take. That's a tweak. Would somebody say we shouldn't build a new campus because we don't know where the sidewalks are going to go? I don't think so. So I'm hopeful that you'll give us the authority to move forward with some of the questions. We will not be able to come back to you and say, "We've got a completed project." We have to come back to you and say, "Pay for this place, what about this funding?" You will have to authorize every step of the way like we would in any other construction project. But we can't even begin to have the conversation if we can't get this resolution moved forward. So, again, I would encourage you, and then one last thing I thought of, you know, I, I hear some of you talking about the safety of the downtown. First of all, I think downtown Hagerstown is a safe place, my wife and I spend time down there. But I know some of you say, "Well, your personal experience doesn't matter to me." But I would say this, my most recent employer was in New York City. And I will tell you, the public school kids in New York City not only ride the subway every day, but they walk the streets of New York City. And I'm pretty sure if those kids can navigate the streets of New York City, in Manhattan and Soho and places like that, our kids can navigate the streets of Hagerstown. I believe they can. And I also will say to you, not only is it safe, I think it creates really a cool and a hip vibe for our kids, that they have an urban campus that includes the library, includes the university system of Maryland for inspiration, it includes the Barbara Ingram Center itself, which is a beautiful building and great architecture, which people fought highly of when they built. But the other diamond in all of this is the Maryland Theater that is right next door. When the question was asked about, you know, are we only limited in our town, I don't necessarily know that we are, but certainly the resolution is trying to push us there. And why is that? Because the Maryland Theater is there, and our school is named the Barbara Ingram School for the Visual and Performing Arts. Why would we not want to be there for those kids? Why would we not want to take advantage of that great venue? So I would encourage a positive vote, but at the same time, I'm respectful of all of you and the constituencies that you represent. But I would hope that my board, our board in Washington County, would think about what's best for our kids and not necessarily try to make a vote that protects another elected body. Let them protect themselves. If they want to say no, they'll say no. But I don't think we should say no for them. I think we should give them the opportunity. And I honestly believe, forward-thinking commissioners like we have, when they're presented with a financial case that we're going to present to them, they're going to have a hard time saying no. They may, but I think they'll have a hard time. That's as hard a sell as I can do tonight. Thank you.
I'm impressed. Thank you, Dr. Wilcox, heartfelt. I'd like to take a moment, if I can, I try to allow all my colleagues to, to have their time. Mrs. Harshman, the only comment I will say is, I would be remiss if I didn't take exception to the comment that Hagerstown is almost bankrupt. I think the mayor and council might disagree with that, and so I, I would certainly not want that to go on the record. And in fact, there's been several articles recently, and a lot of interest and energy in Hagerstown, and I just don't want to let that go out there. I have a problem with that statement. What I've heard here tonight is very similar to the discussion we had with the tech plan not so long ago. There is...